Do we have any kind of sanitation to sanitize the mic there or whenever they, Kim?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes, right here.
I had a complaint at the last council meeting. One person comes to talk, it's not sanitized, and then another one comes to talk, and it's not sanitized. There was no list on Facebook.
Are we on or not?
Yes, sir.
Here too?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and call this special city council meeting to order at 6:01. We have a full complement of the council, so we have a quorum. Go to citizens comments. I think we have one person present who wants to make a comment, and that's Mr., oh, we have two. We have Chavel Lopez and Dee Willman. Dee Willman signed up first, so we'll have her first.
My name is Dee Willman. I live at 250 County Road, 341. Leadership does not have the luxury of making friends. A leader's responsibility is to hold people accountable. In government, the responsibility is even more audacious due to the fact that the taxpayer money must be spent to benefit all taxpayers, not just friends, not just family, but all taxpayers. Unfortunately, some think because they have a relationship with a leader that they are more deserving than others. Kim Davis has made mistakes. She will be the first to admit it. One mistake was to try to be a good friend to her staff. A few have now made accusations and aired private, privileged conversations to try to destroy her reputation and her livelihood. Council's decisions should be made on the merits of her performance and accomplishments. I know the majority of you have been here for years, and you are well aware of what this leader has accomplished. Getting the city out of the TCEQ oversight, hiring qualified personnel and training personnel already with the city to not need Medina Electric co-op oversight, pushing staff to become more health-conscious, which has led to three years in a row no increase in the city's health insurance premium. Unheard of in these times. The budget awards for three years, the no-finding audits, the replacement of old infrastructure, water, sewer, and electric systems throughout the city, the purchase and training of personnel to repair streets properly, keeping the recreation facilities up and running, a new library, et cetera. These are all council's accomplishments, too. You and the city manager have worked very hard and very well together to accomplish these things for all citizens of the city. So you don't like Kim's personality? Fine, but that's not a good reason to start over with a leader you have no history with here in Hondo. The city of Hondo has weathered this COVID-19 pandemic pretty well. Yes, we have been affected, but we have not had to furlough or lay off any employees because of money issues or lack of preparation for such an unforeseen event. Kim Davis has provided guidance to you, to council, to mitigate the spread of the virus, keep council informed of the status of the city, and offer possibilities for the relieving of financial stress of citizens while also protecting the staff's health. The city of Hondo did not wait until there were numerous cases within our boundaries before we began to implement changes. Kim Davis can see the potential in people and push those people to accomplish it through education. She can also see potential of what this city can be in the future. Her vision for improvements for all citizens should be embraced, not cut off due to a dislike of her personality. There will be a new city council after November. Let the next council work with her. If they decide she's not the right leader, they can make the change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Willman. Chavel Lopez.
My name is Chavel Lopez. I'm a candidate for the November 3 election for place four of the city elections, and I'm here today to talk about workers' rights. I think, you know, that workers, the public, the public city workers, you know, have a right to, to have a voice in the decision-making process of the city, you know, that they should have a right to, to representation, you know, they should have a right to belong to any type of labor organization that they want to belong to. I'm pretty sure that, like, the city manager, she probably belongs to a city manager's association or something, you know? So the workers have a right, too, you know? Workers shouldn't be working in fear. They shouldn't be working in any type of fear. They should have, you know, representation. So if there's a problem at, at the, at the worksite, you know, if there's anything that has to do with working conditions, occupational health and safety benefits, or even if they're suspended or they're trying to get terminated, that they should get some representation immediately to represent them, you know, to bring, to file a grievance for them if they have to file one, to get some counseling on whatever the situation is. You know, I think that the, the city managers here has been here for already five years, you know? Our streets still look terrible, you know? We have a lot of potholes all over the place. The alleys, you know, I have seen alleys that have not, have not been taken care of. So the brush, the brush pickup, she privatized the brush pickup. I think we had a, a better service when we had the city workers and we have, we had the ship truck here, and they got rid of the ship truck, and now it's privatized, and sometimes, you know, they, they don't pick up the, the brush when it's supposed to be picked up. It's supposed to be picked up the first full week of the month, and they, sometimes they skip it, and they don't do it, and we're still paying for it. So I'm just saying that workers do have rights, you know? I know it's, we have a right to, we're, we live in a right-to-work state, 14B, you know, and the city has, the state or, you know, the city or the county or the school, they have the at-will employees, but at-will employees, you know, you can't fire them just for any type of reason that you want to, like it stipulates. All workers have a right to due process, so they should have a right to that due process. And I believe that the, the home rule charter where it states, you know, about the city manager, you know, duties and responsibilities, that's going to have to be amended, you know? Because the city, you know, the, the city council is giving the city manager too much power, you know? How can she have the power, you know, to determine if she's going to terminate an employee or suspend them, and the employee doesn't even have the right to appeal it to the city council? I remember when I was in the city council, we had labor concerns, and people filed grievances, and they were able to appeal it to the city council, and we still had the charter at that time. I believe, I guess the, the, the charter review committee changed that back in the, after the recall election, you know, and they changed it to where they gave the city manager all that power. So I believe that needs to be changed, and the workers do have rights, and they should belong to any type of labor organization that they want to belong to to get representation. Thank you.
I believe that's all that signed up, but we have several email comments. I've asked the mayor pro tem to read a couple of them, but I'll start off with, Dear Mayor, City Council, and to whom this may concern. My name is Tim Calderon, and I am a former employee of the city of Hondo dating from October 2017 to March 2020. I was a program coordinator for the Recreation Division as well as president of the Employee Committee for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. The reasoning for my departure from the city of Hondo was to pursue, pursue a job opportunity more suited and tailored in my degree area of exercise science. The purpose of this letter is to show my appreciation and support for the city of Hondo city manager Kim Davis. I will start off by saying Kim and the administration she manages is the reason I miss being an employee for the city of Hondo every single day. Her leadership, influence, and drive to make the city one of the best small towns to live in is one I've always looked up to during my tenure with the city. I've had many supervisors in the past, and I can hold hardly say that none compare to Kim Davis. Her control, direction, and governance were so infectious as it portrayed down the ladder to her staff to make a highly effective and efficient team. Her door was always open and welcoming for my suggestions or concerns that I may have had. I can count numerous times I spent in her office talking about improvements we'd like to see and other opportunities we could make, not only for the city but for the employees, to be more involved and centered around family-oriented. Besides her leadership quality, her family-oriented management style was one I cherished the most. Kim and her staff have been here for me during two of my biggest milestones in my life, the marriage to my wife and the birth of my son. The outpour of love, affection, and support she portrayed on me and my family was unparalleled and greatly valued. Kim has always been heavily involved within the community. During my time as president of the Employee Committee, we hosted many employees, many events for the employees, as well as numerous outreach programs for citizens of Honda. There was not one event I have not seen Kim attend. She would appear, show her support and appreciation, and actively participate in helping any way she could. Further, her son Zach participated in many camps and sport leagues the Recreation Center hosted throughout the years, in which she had attended practices and games. I think one of Kim's greatest attributes is her love and care for her family, and that undoubtedly carries over to Team Hondo family. The amount of respect, time, and appreciation she contributes to her employees is one that is fairly strong and well-appreciated leader well-represents. I will forever and disputedly cherish my time as employee for the city of Hondo. Kim is a strong, courageous, and well-commended, commendable supervisor and leader for the city of Hondo. She symbolizes everything a city manager and well-respected administrator signifies and characterizes. She has contributed to numerous accolades for the city throughout the years and is a great face to represent the past, current, and future employees. Hope this letter finds, this letter finds a value for my support of Kim Davis. Please let me know of any questions or concerns you might have. Best regards, Tim Calderon, Ms. Want to read the next one?
This is from Lynn McBay, grounds superintendent. To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter concerning the city manager Kim Davis. I've had the pleasure of working with Kim Davis now with the city of Hondo and also with the city of Casterville as a contractor. She has always been fair and honest with me. I don't always agree with what she has to say, but she is always willing to listen to what I have to say and make a compromise if needed. I have been with the city of Hondo since March 2020, and I have never seen her disrespect me or my crew. It is a complete opposite. She has sent me several emails complimenting the work we have done. In my opinion, she is an asset to the city of Hondo. Thank you for listening.
I'll do the next one. Dear Mayor and Council, in reference to the Kim Davis fiasco, I myself can testify in my 38 years of service that I worked with about eight city managers. The city has never been run in the poor manner it currently is experiencing. There is no doubt that Kim Davis runs her tenure with fear, fear and intimidation. In the past six years, the city has lost over 30 employees from being fired, forced to enter early, retirement, or plain old pressure to leave due to the environment that Mrs. Davis has created. Many are labeled as disgruntled, collateral damage, or other names when truly what we are are victims of a ruler with a pre-agenda. The city has lost department heads, secretaries, public works directors, and experienced directors with many years of service. It is your responsibility as elected officials to do your due diligence, as, as to look into these matters with open minds and hearts. If you choose not to, then you have failed as a representative of the city and to your constituents. No one should have worked under this type of pressure. Thank you for your time. Larry Arco. Next one.
It's from Carissa Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Manager. I have been fortunate enough to work for the city for 10 years this November. In that time, I have worked under four different city managers, Robert Herrera, Tim Foose, Jeff Litchfield, and Kim Davis. Within that time, I have seen the milestones achieved by our city of Hondo team under Ms. Davis' leadership. With everything going on today, it's easy to overlook the impact she has had in keeping our organization moving forward. During a pandemic where millions of Americans have lost their jobs, city of Hondo employees have been able to continue earning their paychecks and flexible schedules where offered to protect employees and their families. Shortly after her hiring, Ms. Davis pushed for a co-op study that provided employees with more competitive salaries. Many of our positions at the time were around minimum wage, and I believe this study only created an opportunity for better qualified candidates to join our team. Each department has made significant progress in their division when it comes to operations and services to the city. It goes without saying that each division deserves its own recognition for these accomplishments. However, Ms. Davis is usually one of the first to acknowledge such endeavors, and I believe her influence with our executive leaders contributed to these accomplishments. My personal experience with Ms. Davis could be described as a professional relationship with constant support and inspiration to be better. She does not stop pushing staff to raise the bar in each of our respective fields. She exemplifies encouragement in helping staff realize their potential. I have gone through several personal milestones during my time with the city, and Ms. Davis has taken it upon herself to reach out during each one to show her concern and support, including achieving my bachelor's degree, my marriage, and my mother's battle with cancer. These acts, these are actions of someone who cares about her employees, not just in the work environment but also personally. A capacity that a city manager does not have to meet, as Ms. Davis chooses to anyways. Many of these accusations against Ms. Davis have been brought forward from previously employed individuals. I ask council to ask what were the reasons for these individuals either willingly resigning or being terminated from their positions. As supervisors, we are faced with challenges of getting uncooperative employees to understand and meet expectations. At some level, ownership needs to be taken by these individuals for failing to do their jobs at the capacity expected. Each city of Hondo employee has a job to do, and in order for us to be successful, each one needs to do their part. I ask council to reflect on city operations. Have operations been impacted negatively, or are we more equipped at providing higher quality services? If a decision is to be made regarding Ms. Davis' conduct with employees past and present, wouldn't it be most appropriate for council to canvass all employees so a thorough decision is made? Our contribution as a staff has to do with how we are led, and leadership starts at the top. Ms. Davis and I have had differences in opinion. She has had to be forthcoming and firm, but I would not say inappropriate or unfair. Truthfully, I've witnessed an individual who cares deeply for employees but also her job and shows that by being involved at several different levels, whether painting doghouses, assisting in national night out, volunteering in Christmas, Christmas in God's Country as a Rotary Club member, and participating in local charity events. These actions reinforce that she has the best intentions for the city of Hondo, is a role model to those who get to work with her, and is an asset to our team.
Okay, I think this is the last one. Greetings, Mr. Mayor and the City Council members. My name is Don Yellabardios, and I have been employed by the city of Hondo's Electric Division for eight years, and I'm writing this letter because I am aware of the situation with the city manager Kim Davis. I don't know the reasons why some folks have made a point to want to get rid of her. I'm not aware of what has been going, going on or for what reasons, but I personally know that Kim Davis has done great things with the city of Hondo and deserves to stay in as city manager so that she may continue to do great things with our great city. I personally know that she has been very helpful in certain situations that arise. I, for one, have always admired the fact that she has made a point that her doors are always open if any problem should arise due to work-related situations. I do believe that the city has come a long way since she was hired on as city manager and let us not let the little negativity overcome all the good things that have been accomplished while she was, while she has served as city manager. On another note, it has nothing to do with whatever is going on with the situation. Let me tell you all that I recently experienced the death of my last surviving sister that I had due to COVID-19. Out of five siblings, I'm the only one left now, and it's just me and my dad. The month of August has been tough for us, and I can tell you that there was just a handful of folks that encouraged me during this ordeal, and city manager Kim Davis was one of them. She was in direct contact with me and made sure that me and my dad were all right, and if we needed anything, that all I had to do was ask. She literally lifted me up, lifted up my spirit in a time of darkness. It really took a toll on me for two weeks. I felt like just giving up, and she was right there, staying in constant contact with me to make sure I was all right. Me and my wife, Belinda, have been married for 28 years and were born and raised in Hondo, Texas. She has worked for HEB for 23 years, most of these years as deadly manager. In 2018, me and my wife adopted our granddaughter and one nephew and three nieces ages five, seven, nine, 10, and 15, so, so that they would stay together and not be separated throughout the state. And that's after the fact that we were already done raising our two boys. We started all over again, and I believe, me, it's not easy working full-time jobs and taking care of five children. But to make a point that city manager, Kim Davis is fully aware of mine and my wife's situation, but Kim Davis has been very supportive in our situation, letting me know that if I need anything, just let her know, and as long as it's within the guidelines, she would do anything to help us out. And for that, I'm very proud to work for the city of Hondo. So I ask you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, to not let the little things of the negativity get in the way of her to accomplish the good things that she's done for our great city. Thank you for your time and dedication to our city. Truly yours, Don Yellabardios. That completes the question. All right, move on to item number four. Discuss and consider city manager Davis' conduct with employees past and present, citizens, and council members. I'm hoping for that discussion.
Mayor, I filed a formal complaint against the city manager for, for the purposes of, of moving forward with the investigation if council chooses to. That's how I was instructed to put it on the agenda item. So Jesse, what do we need to do moving forward?
Councilman, if you wish, you can, at this particular time, the council can discuss sort of the initial, whatever comments you have regarding the allegations or relating to your particular complaint, the council can discuss it. The action items that would be allowable at this time on the agenda would be, should the council wish to pursue, pursuing an investigation, they would have two basic means of doing it, either the council could conduct it itself, or it can hire a third party to do it. So, and we can get into the details of the mechanics of how that works in closed session. If you would like to discuss the facts and circumstances relating to your complaint, you could do that this time. If the council wishes to do it later on, you cannot do it in closed session.
Sure.
You can be allowed to do so. I can take that back. You can discuss them in closed session. Kim would be allowed to attend because it would be related to her performance of her work.
Sure.
However, if you, and if her attorney wanted to participate, Kim would then have the option of, of asking that the discussion be made in open session. So, long and the short of it, if you would like to discuss the merits or facts or circumstances relating to the complaint, probably best to do them in open session. I believe Kim's attorney is participating probably online, secret in the room, certainly available to participate in. And this would be the appropriate time to do that.
Sure.
And after a closed session, we can discuss how the mechanics of what will be evolved in your, if the council wants to pursue an investigation.
So obviously, performance wise, you know, you know, for me, I think, I think it's streets. You know, we, Councilman Long requested some, some information, and it was supplied to us, and in the 1.9, almost $2 million that we've spent, and this dates back from 2016, fiscal year 2016 and 17. So in 2016 fiscal year, 2016 and 17, we, we did a lot of curbing, a lot of drainage improvements. But in fiscal year 18, 19, 19, and 20, we hadn't done anything. We spent $28,092.18 on material fiscal year 18, 19. Fiscal year 19, 20, we spent $13,000 thus far, $13,690, bringing a total of $41,782. Out of the almost $2 million, we spent half a million on equipment. Everything else is engineers, you know? You know, we, we, the city invested a lot of money in, in this equipment, and, you know, we, we, I feel that we still haven't received a great plan to move forward, especially in the short term with the $1 million that we have sitting in the account to do streets.
Mayor, may I simply point out that in terms of the $1.14 million that we currently have, the council decided not to follow the recommendation of the manager and staff but to go forward with looking at two streets and potholes across the town. So that has to be weighed against what Mr. Mayor had to say. And I think that many people within the city who have seen projects over the last couple of three years would wonder about the comment that nothing has been done. Has enough been done? Is it ever finished? No. We had a long and thorough survey done by experts in streets, and then proposition was brought to us for which streets need which, and a five-year plan was laid out. Council did not feel that this was the time to pursue that, and we instead made going forward with 1.4. I simply say that in terms of discussion with the complaint about streets.
Can we move into executive session, attorney-client privilege to discuss the manager's contract?
If we go into executive session without deciding to pursue a, an investigation, if we decide not to pursue, the item says, discuss and consider city manager Kim Davis' conduct with employees past and present, citizens, and council members.
Because my question, question to the attorney is that... Because my question to the attorney is that this item was placed on the agenda as was requested, and if council wants to move on to executive session, does that end the discussion with this agenda item?
It would end the discussion regarding item number four, which is the current item, with regard to the allegation relating to the complaints that Council Mavella has filed. The item number six on the agenda is items that would come, actions that would come out of closed session. So, in the item number five, sub-A and sub-B, would allow the council to discuss the manner in which it would like to conduct an investigation if it wanted to do so. And then it can take action on that, on item number six, when they come out, so that can be done afterwards.
So items A and B under executive session do not allow us to discuss her performance?
No. Well, Mayor, you may do so, but again, Kim would be allowed to attend that discussion regarding her performance. So if you want to discuss that, it's probably best to do that under item four, right now. She would be allowed to come into closed session, and I believe she probably would want to have her turn, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I suspect she probably would, in which case then you would need to come into open session again to do that. So, I would suggest that if you want to have a discussion on the merits or items relating to the complaint, that call them under item four, now in open session, and then we can discuss the mechanics if you want to pursue an investigation and the like in closed session, which Kim would not.
Not sure what he said.
Let me say something. We started off with item number four, discussing and considering City Manager Davis's conduct with employees, past, present, citizens, or council. What was discussed about that?
That Council Mavella was, that's the item where Council Mavella presented his complaint.
But nothing was said.
He read, I think he read parts of his complaint, referred to it, but again, this is up to him, that's his opportunity.
So, let me tell you what, no, no, so let me tell you what actually drove me to file this complaint on, one, you know, it was the investigation, but two, most recently, I had a citizen reach out to me because he posted, and Councilwoman Long got the same phone call, posted something on social media, and there was a big thread on social media on it in regards to the streets and the potholes and things like that. So this citizen has every right to post whatever he wants on social media. He's a well-respected gentleman in the community, and he was, so after posting this on social media, his employer was contacted, and he was told to remove it.
So is your complaint with his employer?
No, sir. So the phone call that came from, the phone call to his employer was from the city manager.
However, I did not ask that the post be removed.
Close session.
Why don't you make a motion and we move?
So I make a motion, I make a motion that we move all of our discussion into executive session, and Ms. Davis, can you?
I would rather have it, I would rather have it in open session. If we're going to do it, then let's do it in open session, and I'll say yes. I did call his employer as a vent, and I did say that I understand as a citizen, he had every right to do that, and it was just more of me reaching out saying that he also represented the Chamber of Commerce and that it could cause public perception to be certain ways about the relationship between the city and the chamber. In no way did I ever ask for the post to be removed, and in fact, I specifically stated to his employer that I did not want him to have the discussion with his employee and have the discussion removed. And there was a subsequent email from the employee stating that he removed the post on his own free will and no one had directed him to do so. That was sent to all of council, I believe, that he made that decision, and that he and I had a phone conversation after that where I talked to him specifically and said, "I was happy to sit down and meet with him regarding streets," and that I understood his frustration. We talked about a specific intersection that he had concerns about, and I generated a work order for him and showed him how to generate work orders, because having dialogue on social media, while it's great, doesn't generate work orders for people. And I just wanted to make sure that the work order was generated. But I never asked his employer to instruct him to remove it. That's between him and his employer.
That is true, Kim, but I kind of disagree that every citizen in Hondo has a right to post on social media, let me finish. Social media, whatever, whatever they want, you know, that's what social media is there for. That's why I don't have social media, and I think every citizen has a right to post whatever they want. I just, I don't agree with you calling his employer for the fact that he posted something and expressed his opinion. That's, you know, I kind of agree with.
Like I said, my only concern was the relationship between that particular entity as it pertains to the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, you should, I think, instead of calling the employer, I think you should have called the citizen and the person that posted on social media and not his employer. I mean.
She shouldn't call anybody. You're 100% wrong, Kim, 100% wrong. And you don't even need to call the gentleman either. He has a right to complain. And the way, if you can't stand the heat, then get out of the kitchen. I mean, you gotta, you gotta go with the heat, and you've known that.
I agree.
I don't understand why you would make a call to his employer. That is very unprofessional, very uncalled-for.
Okay.
Very uncalled-for. I don't disagree, I disagree with that 100%.
Okay.
Okay, that's, Mr. Attorney, discussing her performance, if she doesn't want to go into executive session with it, we have to do it now, right?
Correct. If you would like to discuss performance and allegations relating to the complaint that Council Mavella submitted, complaint.
Oh, it's got to be now.
Do that now. And that would limit our discussion in closed session to specifically the manner of how you would go about doing the investigation if the council wanted to do that. So we could do that in closed session, in which case Kim would not participate in that.
Let's go into closed session, and we can discuss.
Just one notification.
What's here, and then we can come back out.
Well, as soon as we're through with this item, we'll go to that, and all I've heard is two complaints so far, so.
There are, there is a letter, a complaint letter, and in it are eight allegations. Those, can those be discussed? Or which has to do, or do they have to be, would they be more properly discussed in terms of which ones we're going to investigate when we talk about parameters?
To the extent that they relate to the process and how you go about it, yes, it would be appropriate to do that in closed session. It's also an opportunity for the council to ask each other with regard to any allegations that were made, and it's an opportunity for the council to discuss the merits of that, whether they agree or disagree with whatever was asserted. You've had a little bit of that discussion.
But it remains that these allegations you're talking about have to be discussed now, not in closed session.
I believe, I believe that since these allegations have been made, it is fair to those who are alleging, and it is fair to the citizens of Hondo for them to be investigated and proven or disproven. And that means that they're going to have to be made public, and people will weigh in as to whether they think it's a heavy thing or not. They'll weigh in here tonight, and they'll weigh in in the court of public opinion, and probably on social media.
We don't have any more complaints, I'm moving on from this item.
Let's move on.
We will move on to item numbers five, executive session. We'll go into executive session at 5:39, and we'll talk about A and B, which, Mr. Counsel...